Just out of curiosity. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, it is now 6:36, and we're coming back in from executive session. And Mr. Brennan, there is no, nothing we need to do as far as what happened back there with Lyman Jones case? Thank you, Mr. Brennan. So, um, do I have a motion for adjournment of the special city council meeting at 6:00 P.M.? Second? Okay, all in favor? Thank you very much, counsel. Now, regular city council meeting, 6:37, a call to order, July the 12th, and determine whether a quorum is present. A quorum is present. Uh, person that was going to do the invocation couldn't be here tonight, so we will move on to the pledge of allegiance. I'd like the students of the Jackson Keller Elementary to please come up to the front here and lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to move on to item two, which is acknowledgements and presentations. Very happy this evening to, on item A, talk about, as a mayor, I'm always looking for ways to encourage our citizens, especially the youth of our community, community. I offered the idea as an essay writing contest to our local Jackson Keller Elementary School. This essay was on "What If I Were the Mayor?" I wanted to engage the students in municipal government and find out what they would do. These students are our future leaders. Let's have the students come forward, please. Cassandra, will you bring your counsel forward, please? Cassandra Stevenson was the winner, and she is the mayor. Cassandra, would you like to start with your counsel, please? Start to the left in place one, and ask them to please read their essay. And, uh, close to the microphone, please, sir. I'm not sure. Is this Timothy? Is that him? Oh, okay. Timothy? Are you Timothy? Okay, good, good. Timothy Weekly.
Yes, sir. Please read.
I would be, I would make a good mayor of any city because I would not allow any people who smoke or litter. I would not allow them to spray paint or drink. I could help every kid on earth, and if I get money, I could donate to a nice teacher named Ms. Jay Punt. I would be the nicest man in the United States. If I helped any, if I helped the poor, I would be happy for them so they can have money and clothes. Being the mayor would be awesome. Any trash I see, I would throw it away. I will reduce, reuse, and recycle. I will make any bullies be very, very nice. Now that I'm a kid, I will always follow rules anywhere I go. No one will steal, they will buy. I want to be successful in life so people can nominate me as president.
Thank you, Timothy. Place two.
If I were mayor of, of Castle Hills, I would be like a responsible mayor because I wouldn't want to lose my job. I would act like a leader and donate to the local charities because I would want to save the community of our lives so we could be safe. If we don't, we would have food or water, that, we wouldn't have food or water. That's why all of, all of us should stay safe. When I give my speech, I would say this. All the bad people should go to jail because they wouldn't have, they wouldn't have to steal your children or your possessive things. I would make laws that all people should look, lock their doors during midnight because everyone needs to stay safe from the ugly robbers. That's how I save my community.
Would you mind coming back in later, please? Cassandra, let's call on your place four over here. You're going to be heading up to finishing it up. Place four?
What I would do if I was the mayor, I would, I show my citizenship by not littering and by not disobeying other people, and I will not use bad language. Also, I will listen and I will not be selfish because I care about other people. I do not only think about myself because then whenever I'm older, that might reflect back on me, and then I might not like it. Also, I will show good leadership by caring about others, and I will, I will buy people food and drinks for those who are homeless because sometimes I think if that was me, then I would be sad. So, sometimes I think I should help them out because it is helpful to them. Last, I would make, um, sure nobody gets in any fights because then other people try to separate them, but then they get involved and then they fight, and then the fight gets bigger. So, that's why I would make sure nobody gets in fights. Also, I will not let people pick on other people because some people do not like it, do not like to be picked on. So, that's what I would do as, as a mayor to, to make the city a better place.
We now have the mayor pro temp. Go ahead.
If I was the mayor, if I was the mayor, I would make sure that no one was getting hurt. I would also help them, help all of the stray and make sure that they are healthy, have shots, and that they are not cut, bruised, and some, something is broken. I will also make sure that the environment is clean and no one is littering. I will also make sure no one is fighting. Um, I will visit schools and make sure that the schools, the school students are doing great. I will make a speech and tell the school that if they are doing bad on their work, to never give up. I will also make sure that no one is being bad and make sure that teachers know what they are doing. That, that last thing is that every, everyone is going to have a break. I will donate to schools, hospitals, and other thing, things that need the money and don't have a lot, like donate to the poor.
And finally, Mayor Stevenson, would you like to read your essay, please?
If I were mayor, I would show citizenship by not littering. I would obey the law because littering is not healthy for our environment. And you should always obey the law, follow the law. If I were mayor, I, I wouldn't show leadership. I would be unselfishness, unselfishness by donating clothes, food, and shelter. Also, I would make good decisions by helping people in need. If I were mayor, I would not chop down trees, so San Antonio would be a better place. I would also build a lot more houses for a lower price so more families can live in a house. And even make the food healthier so more people can eat at their favorite place. And put traffic lights at a lot more schools so kids will be safer when they walk home.
Okay, um, so with that said, we're going to go down in the front, and we're actually going to issue proclamations to each one of the council members and mayor, and also take some pictures. Chief, will you join us, please? Uh, Chief Riedel and Rick. Counsel? Oh, I got to kill this guy. All right, the first to come down, please, and then we'll, uh, take the pictures after that is Timothy Wirth. Timothy, in recognition of exemplary citizenship and excellent recommendations based on your "If I Were the Mayor" essay contest and your profound insights and thoughtfulness, recommendations on how to treat your peers and the environment, I therefore, Timothy A. Howell, mayor of Castle Hills, do hereby declare and appoint you alderman for a day. Thank you, Timothy. Andrea? Valenzuela?
Ariana.
Ariana, sorry. Valenzuela. In recognition, in recognition of exemplary citizenship and excellent recommendations based upon your "If I Were the Mayor" essay contest and your profound insights and thoughtfulness, recommendations on how to treat your peers and environment, therefore, I, Timothy A. Howell, mayor, city of Castle Hills, do hereby declare and appoint you alderman for the day. Thank you very much. The Angel? Welcome. The Angel, in recognition of exemplary citizenship and excellent recommendations based upon your "If I Were the Mayor" contest essay and your profound insights and thoughtfulness, recommendations on how to treat the peers and others, I, Timothy A. Howell, do appoint you alderman for the day. Yvette Garcia?
Yvette, in recognition of exemplary citizenship and excellent recommendations based on "If I Were the Mayor" essay contest and your profound insights and thoughtful recommendations on how to treat your peers and the environment, I therefore, Timothy A. Howell, mayor of the city of Castle Hills, do hereby declare and appoint you alderman of the day.
This is a proclamation from the office of the mayor, city of Castle Hills. Whereas Cassandra Stevenson is recognized for her leadership and compassion for citizens and community that resonated in your essay, and whereas her interest in serving her community in the leadership role is worthy and commendation, and whereas her ability to see the world beyond herself and understand the need to have consideration of others in a noble and honorable character trait, and whereas she has the willingness to be involved and respond to the call of action demonstrated strong citizenship. And whereas Cassandra's moral values, actions, serve her in making her community, country, and world a better place to live. Therefore, I, Timothy A. Howell, mayor of Castle Hills, do hereby proclaim recognition of the outstanding citizenship of Cassandra Stevenson. Signed, Timothy A. Howell. Okay, and with that, we are going to present Cassandra with a monogrammed, with her name on it, key to the city of Castle Hills. While the students, while the council and the mayor is exiting the chambers, I wanted to point out a couple of things that they did get for this. They got a complete tour of the city, which included dispatch, it included the police department detective room, even in the jail. We let them sit in a police car and explained what everything was for. They got to turn on the siren. Also, after that, they were escorted over to the fire department where, uh, they were taken through a complete tour of our fire facilities and topped off by a ice cream and small cookie party that beat the band. So, with that said, thank you for participating in this, Jackson Keller Elementary, and thank you very much. Okay. Next is street and infrastructure update by Councilman John Squire.
All right, thank you, mayor.
While John is getting the projector set up, he and our own Rick Harada, along with, uh, EZ Bell and some other, two other engineers, have our street program, as you know, well underway. We're working with SAWs, and SAWs is picking up some of the cost of, of that. And we apologize in advance for any inconvenience. If you have to, uh, detour around these areas, or you've just washed your car and happened to go down in the street like I did, I want to let you know, this will be the reason why. We're in phase two, getting ready in the near future to enter into phase three. So, uh, we've, uh, you ready? Okay, here we go. Mr. Squire, did you want to move forward with your presentation, please?
Okay, all right. So, I kind of wasn't listening to what the mayor was saying. We're trying to get this thing going, so I assume he gave you a good update. So, is that all? Are we done? Real quick, we got to, the, the slides are going to kind of go where we at on the, on the, on the current project of the streets and the, and the sewer and water upgrades. But there's some other items that are, that are going on also. Um, I mean, it's, it's multifaceted of what, what we keep doing for the streets. But real quick, what you're seeing right now is, is just the, the current schedule for the next, for the next two weeks. Mainly, mainly you're seeing work on Mimosa, Adobe, and, uh, East Castle, both East and also, so West Castle. To, to make some comments on that, this is just basically, okay, so they're, they're focusing on the, on installing the sewer and the, uh, and the, the water right now with the big trenching machine. And I'm sure everybody's had to deal with the, that, that thing kicking up the dust and the debris and everything as they're, as they're putting these new lines in. But just to let everybody know, the first actual paving, which is really the end point of doing the, this work that's going on, we're scheduled right now for the end of July to go ahead and take care of East and West Castle simultaneously. As those are, as, as those are complete, then we will be moving down as they complete the infrastructure, and then they'll be coming through and doing the, and doing the topping out of them. Go ahead and go to the, the next one. That's really the meat of it as far as what, what we're doing.
Yeah, and, and this is awfully, awfully small. This is just a, all this is, is kind of a Gantt chart that's, that's in a different, in different form. The schedule that you're seeing up there, and if we just kind of, kind of go through, can you pop through that real quick? Okay, so what you're seeing is, is, okay, there's, there's a, there is a job calendar. They're estimating a job to be, part number is 190 days. And, and so what we're looking at doing is finishing this job by the end of the year. If you, if we go all the way down to the bottom, you will see that, that the actual finish date, which is just the, all of the, all the minor work is set up for January, I think, I think it ends January 6th. Uh, let's pull down the buttons. Yeah, so the punchless items, okay, um, the punchless items are set up to end by January 6th. Currently, uh, there were some delays that, that, that were suffered. I'll come back over here if somebody can hear me. There were some delays just suffered because of all the rain we had, and then we had a lot of, with, with just, just everything being so soaked, it took some time to, to be able to get back into, uh, doing infrastructure work. So, if you click at the schedule, just highlight it. We're on, we're on East Castle, West Castle, Mimosa, uh, and also there is work, there is work on Adobe. They'll follow up, they may follow up with, with Primaria, and then, I think we go south, we're going to be on Gladiola, and then, and then Danube. That's good, that should take care of all the, all the streets on this part. And if you look at some of the, you know, the, the, the South Loop, Danube, and Gladiola is going to be in a year as they, as they get through there. So, a lot of minutia in there. Um, and if you look at some of the dates on there, the dates are based on the initial schedule. So, you can go by the actual dates. Uh, what to do when they do, when they do complete each task, they update, uh, they update the task completion dates. So, that says, that's just, that's just a broad day, and that's, and that's the, they're, they're very, that's very comprehensive to look at. Couple of things.
It's off again. A couple of things to note on the, on the streets that, that we've found is there's been a lot of, of un, unknown lines, both water lines and some unknown sewer lines, very typical in, in infrastructure this old. And as they've been finding them, they've been repairing them, and also have been doing some change orders to, to go ahead and, and, and get it properly fixed. Everybody's been inconvenienced. I'm sure there's been some low water pressure situations. There've been people without water for, for periods of time. That'll continue for the short term, but as they move through, that'll be, that, that'll be less and less. Okay. Couple of other things. Uh, some of the maintenance items that, that are going on, uh, West Avenue, there's been a significant amount of crack sealing that's been done recently. Uh, the goal is to get that prepared and ready for, for this winter. And Rick, I think we are about done with the crack sealing. Am I, am I correct? Couple of weeks left of crack sealing. It's a, it's kind of a one lane at a time situation to try to, try to work through traffic and not, and not impede traffic flow. And they've been incrementally doing, doing that. And that's, and that's done in-house by, by, uh, Rick's, Rick and his staff. The, uh, they did a survey, or we did a survey for all the depressions on all the streets in the city, and have located all the depressions. Some of that work is already taking place on repairing those depressions. Some of that work is already taking place on repairing those depressions. There was, how many, about how many depressions were there? I can't remember off the top of my head.
Well, it was about eight streets where the total, I was like, there are depressions and there was on curbs, obviously, depressions.
Yeah. And, and, and that also include, yes, I'm, thank you for bringing it up. That also included some curb failures also that are going to be addressed. And, and those are, those are going to be, be, be going on throughout this year. So they're, they're doing some street cuts to repair some of the streets that are, that are, that are ravelling, or the pavement is ravelling off of it. And so, so it's just a, just an ongoing thing. On the, on this, on the maintenance items, Rick, is there anything that you'd like to add?
Um, as Mr. Squire said, on this depression story, so I'll be out there looking after the streets and wondering what they're doing, jumping back and forth. This will be tremendous maintenance, so then, then we go ahead and do the streets. This will take a lot of cost off the contract. We go ahead and get that done, and then did it through the streets a lot faster than having the pressure handled first, so it will, it will lock it a lot faster.
And what we're referring to is that some of the streets we're working on depressions on, basically, we can come back with a simple mill and overlay down the road, and, and it'll be a lot quicker. And, and those are the streets that we're kind of focusing on at this point. If the mayor will allow me, I'd like to, I'd like to know, since I don't get an opportunity to hear back much or any, is there any questions from anybody here as far as where we're at on the street work or the maintenance of the, of the streets to date? I know I kind of threw that out to you, but I just, I'm just curious. I want to make sure we try to inform everybody the best we can. Awesome. Okay. That's pretty much all we have for now. Thank you, Mayor.
John, thank you so much. We're moving on to section two, item C. This is Citizen of the Year. This is something that I get to do, or mayors before me get to do, that is kind of the fun part of, of our job. Okay. 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 Thank you. This will be Citizen of the Year for 2015. Being a small city, we are blessed to have many residents that are involved in so many aspects of our city. I would love to be able to give this award to so many people, but I have to narrow it down to just one. Let me tell you a little bit about this unique individual who gives so much to this city. Our Citizen of the Year of 2015 was not born in Castle Hills, but she got here as quick as she could. And now makes her home here in our city. She brings energy. She brings ideas. And she brings true action. When asked to serve on zoning, she responded to the call with the resounding yes. When the city actively began pursuing community involvement, National Night Out, she and her husband immediately volunteered to host a block, a block party in their neighborhood. Last September 11th began to draw near. She came forward and asked what she could do to help coordinate a memorial at City Hall. She arranged a color guard for the presentation of the colors, invited area elementary schools not only to attend, but to receive American flags and her own gift, a goodie bag, to each student. It was the details that made this memorial a very special day. These exemplary actions remind all of us the importance of honoring our first responders, citizens who lost their lives in this tragedy, but also shows the importance of civic pride, patriotism, and living by example. When I decided to host the If I Were... MS-150 bike ride, helping the abandoned animals get needed veterinary services to aid in finding them forever homes, bringing treats to various city departments to thank all their staff for their work. This is just a part of this citizen's list. At this time, I would like Mrs. Jana Baker to come forward as we thank you for your service, your acts of kindness that make Castle Hills a better place. No matter the event, Jana is eager to step up, help out. She can be counted on at any time. Jana? She just asked me for a tea to the city. Sorry, Jen. Jen, I'd like to present you with this award and, and thank you for everything you do for the city. Not only when asked, which is not very often, because she asked us before. She's asked to do something. But for, for your kindness, your generosity, and we are truly blessed to have you and Quint in our city. Thank you. Okay, due to all the excitement tonight, I forgot to ask, is there anybody who did not sign up for, who would like to speak under Citizens to Be Heard besides Brother Dooling and Jack Joyce? Okay. Actually, Jack Joyce has signed up for a item, but Jack, you can speak under Citizens to Be Heard anytime you want. Okay. Chief Davis, presentation of pins to Captain Siemens.
Mayor, council. Mayor might have a few more words than I do about this program because he always sits in the dais and listens to all the lectures. But Captain Siemens has graduated from the FBI LITA program, which is Law Enforcement Executive Development Association, is what LITA stands for. It's premier training. It's a national, it's, it is a nationally recognized program. Castle Hills is fortunate enough to host this training here at our city, in this very room, at least three times a year. And we are fortunate enough to funnel our troops through this training. It is a three-week program. It focuses on supervisory leadership skills, command leadership skills, and executive leadership skills. Upon graduation, you're awarded with a trilogy award. And we are going to funnel our entire supervisory staff through this program until we run out of supervisory staff. And hopefully, we will promote some more and send them through the program as well. But it's a very good program. I've been, I've attended. Some sergeants have attended, and now Captain Siemens has graduated this class. And it was last month, I believe, Mr. Mayor. And with that said, I'd like Mr. Mayor to provide Captain Siemens, come on up, Captain, with a small token of our appreciation. Captain, or Mayor?
Captain, when the chief said, "This is a, a small token", it's exactly what it is. But it, it means a lot more to me especially, and to council, and to everyone here on your completion of this, of this training. Like the captain, like the chief said, the, the person that actually runs this for the FBI came up to me while he was here and actually told me that of all the places they've ever come, that they want to make this their home every year for this activity. Personally, I thought it was because of Garibaldi's, but no, that isn't true. Sergeant Zuniga, the chief, Captain Siemens, they're the reason that this is, this comes to this city. He couldn't tell me how honored he was to be here. And this place was full. How many, chief?
Fifty filled in a week.
Fifty filled in a week. And I sit up there during the day behind a curtain, and I know everything about the FBI I ever wanted to know. So with that said, Captain Siemens, congratulations on your earning this FBI LITA Trilogy Award. It's a pin and also a little bar that he will wear on his lapel to honor this training. Thank you so much. Thank you, chief. Okay, we're moving on to... Item E, Captain Siemens provides date and info about NNO.
Mr. Mayor, council members, as with every year, national announce, fast approaching. It'll be October 4th, the first Tuesday in October. Last, or, yeah, last year, Texas received first place for the 18th year in a row, in large part due to our, our participation, we'd like to think. We increased our participation from nine in, in 14 to 13 block parties last year. As mentioned, Ms. Baker and her husband provide a model block party. If anybody has any questions on some ideas that they can do to host, we're certainly desire to increase those numbers this year. It's a great time to reach out to your neighbors, reintroduce yourselves. Of course, law enforcement, firefight, fire, fire department, and city government will go out and attend these parties as well and provide some one-on-one time. And it's a, it's a good event. We hope, hope to increase that participation. And this information can be found on the website. Kim, is that correct? It will be. If it's not already, it'll be on the website. And we can contact Mary Bell Mendoza for any questions surrounding that.
Wow, unbelievable. Captain, thank you for, for making this a big success. In fact, Douglas, I'm going to ask Douglas, maybe we can buy another fire truck? Because I don't think they got back till about 9:30 last time. So surely, I'm sure you'll get back with me on that. Okay. Item two, F. We have printed the budget workshop and public hearing dates. Please get a schedule off the back table where you signed in or see the city secretary for this information. Item two, G. A back-to-school picnic will be held in the Commons on August 27th. This is the annual mayor's picnic. It'll be at 10:00 a.m. The theme will be child safety this year. Lots of fun and activities will be included. The next item is item four. Kim, would you explain this, please?
Consider the recommendations of Architectural Review Committee regarding the replacement of a fuel station kiosk building for the HEB personnel. The Architectural Review Committee met on June 20th, 2016, and motioned to approve the application. Motion was passed unanimously. The Architectural Review Committee has recommended the approval of this application to the city council. Mark Johnson is with us tonight and is representing HEB and will be presenting this application to you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mark Johnson, I'm with StanTech. I'm here on behalf of HEB tonight. I just have a short PowerPoint presentation to summarize kind of the process that we're going through based on your ordinance and some highlights of the project. And we'll be available to answer any questions.
Thank you. We got a little bit out of order here. We will do Citizens to Be Heard after this presentation on the regular agenda.
If you want to just flip it. Next. So again, the purpose of the project, the existing HEB fuel station over on West Avenue, they're interested in replacing the existing kiosk building. They've done some replacement of the dispensers over the years. And the, the kiosk building is in need of replacement. This is about a $200,000 investment by HEB. So the process that we've been going through, we went before P and Z, as well as city council for the special use permit. This was the, the approval that was granted to us because the building was smaller than the minimum 1,500 square foot required by code. After, once we got through the special use permit, we submitted for the architectural review and went through. And that's, that's being required because the project is over $50,000. We received a unanimous recommendation from the ARC. And so we are now here before you tonight requesting approval of that, of the architectural review. And if we are successful in getting through the council hearing tonight, then we will be submitting formal demolition and building permits. Whoops, what did I do? Okay. This is the project, project overview. This is just the overall site plan. You can see you've got the existing store, West Avenue, 410. This is the location of the fuel station. Nothing is changing about the location. We're just, again, replacing the existing kiosk. This plan just shows, is a representation of the, kind of the amount of, the area of work to demolish, removing the existing building and some of the flatwork, and really going back in essentially the same locations, same-sized kiosk and replacing the flatwork around it. This is an elevation. The primarily provided to illustrate how the existing, or the proposed kiosk will look. There is a mechanical equipment on top of that kiosk, so there's a Louver screen that's being provided. The, the actual building, the current building is just a metal, metal building. And this will actually be a, have a texture and painted surface, more like a stucco. These are photos of the existing facility. I'm not sure how well you can tell, but they're definitely in need of replacement. And then this is the actual kiosk that's ready to be installed upon approval. Again, it's kind of hard to tell. It does have a nice texture with the siding, a clean look, cleaner look than what's out there today. Just a nicer facility upgrade for the employee. So I'm here available to answer any questions you might have.
Hang on just a second. Let's go ahead and get a motion on the table. Do we have a motion to move forward with this?
So move.
Second? Okay, we have a motion as a second. Council? Douglas? Frank? John?
Yeah, a couple of questions, actually of, of Mr. Joyce, if that's okay? Are you just an observer, Jack, or? Jack, thank you for coming up. Appreciate it.
My pleasure.
But I was curious, since y'all, since y'all reviewed the, the installation, was there any, was there any recommendations for any changes or anything whatsoever beyond what they, what they presented?
No, there wasn't. The only concern was to make sure that the screening of the air conditioning units on the roof was properly done. Some of the committee members were a little bit worried about that. So we asked staff to make sure that that all is taken care of, which it should be. to make sure that that all is taken care of, which it should be. It's part of the code. But they were just worried that as you're on the ground looking up, that you might be able to see that equipment. So through the permitting process, that should be addressed.
Okay. Is there any issues that came up since that time?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, okay. It's all the question I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Daggett, did you have any questions for the gentleman? Mr. Vignio? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Appreciate your service. All right. This does have to go into a public hearing. So it is now 7:26, and I'll open the public hearing. We get a lot of latitude here because there's nobody signed up to talk on the hearing. Okay? Oh, George, did you sign up? I'm sorry. Come on up.
Hi, George Booth, 124 Dogwood. I was curious if the station was going to close during this remodel.
Good question.
I buy my gas there.
Ken?
There will be some downtime, but be very limited. They'll be doing this overnight work over a couple of days.
Okay. Forty-eight, seventy-two hours max, huh?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you, George, for that question.
Based on Mr. Johnson's response to George's question, then I have a question. I live behind HEB. You're gonna have construction at night?
If allowed by, if allowed by ordinance.
Well, I don't think it's allowed. I mean, I...
It's not allowed, especially...
There's residences all along behind HEB. I just don't think that's appropriate.
Okay, thank you, Brother Dooling. There is a six o'clock. That can be extended through the city manager, so we'll get together on that as far as what time is actually needed and whether or not we'll have to possibly extend the close time to fit that. We'll get with Kim and/or Janet, you know, as we move forward. When are we gonna start this?
We'd like to get started as soon as possible, so...
Great.
But we do need to still go through the formal building permit, so...
Right.
I would anticipate in the next thirty, sixty days.
Oh, really? Okay. I thought you meant like tomorrow.
Oh.
Sure. Okay. It is now, if there isn't one, anybody else, we're still gonna go back to questions by council. It is now 7:29, and I close this public hearing. Frank?
Just one. You were going to say something, I think. Is there actual construction, or is it just a move-in replacement thing going on that location?
There will be some construction because they'll have to demolish some of the flatwork around the kiosk, pull the kiosk out, and then bring that new kiosk on a foundation and...
Brother Dooling brought up a very good point there, that I was thinking it was just replacement, you know, module-type thing where you move in and take out, which would be different to construction, but I know that you're aware of it now, so you'll take a look into it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Squire?
Yeah, quick question. I'm glad to see y'all working on some infrastructure, and if I'm allowed real quick with a little bit of latitude. It's my hope, and don't respond to this, it's my hope that continue to upgrade and update HEB. To me, that's a very good asset for our community, and it's a good partnership, and I hope to see more things happen to refresh that HEB, and I shop there. It's a very convenient place to go shopping. I get a lot of gas there, too. So, Mr. Booth brought up a great question, too. I don't know where else I'm gonna go. Well, it's other places, but it's very convenient to go there, so... But again, that's my hope, is that y'all continue to upgrade that store. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And when you go through the permitting process, of course, they'll give you the rules and regulations as far as construction and things like that. And please, I ask you again to get with Kim, Janet, and it is at the discretion of the city manager or city official in order to grant any type of extension, but we do need to take in consideration those residents along Gladiola.
Certainly, we'll work with...
I know you will.
We'll work with staff to...
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. We have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you, council. Thank you, sir. Okay. The next item, we're going to go into citizens to be heard. We have one person, and again, we'll extend some latitude here. If anybody would like to speak in citizens to be heard, Brother Dooling?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I had the opportunity to speak with a couple council members about this subject, but I wanted to bring it up so that everybody would have heard the same thing if they haven't gotten it by word of mouth. In walking my dog around the areas that have been paved over on what I refer to as the south side of the city, I noticed some cracking in the brand-new Gladiola part that was paved, the northern section of Gladiola, and that's less than a year old. So to me, that's, it might be an indication of a bigger problem, but I'm not here really to discuss that. But I think if there isn't a process of reviewing and, you know, kind of keeping up with that stuff, maybe that's something we need to do. And I'd be the first one to volunteer to be on the committee to walk around and look at those things, because I'd walk the dog quite frequently, because you really can't see it driving, you know, in the car, but when you're walking along. And these things are progressive in nature. I've spoken to councilmen, squires, and he says, "Well, but it's very small." Well, every crack starts as a small crack. They only get bigger. It's been my experience. I'm not an engineer, but I'm really concerned that, I don't know what the Gladiola extension costs, but it was probably a fair amount of money, and to have it cracking in less than a year. And if you will remember, when I spoke about Gladiola paving, when you were asking comments about, well, what was the quality of the work, and I categorized it as sloppy at best, and I believe I've been vindicated. There's also other sloppy problems with it, but I guess they're not remediable. The depressions that Rick referred to are absolutely correct. The biggest area of cracking is around where water pools every time it rains. So obviously, that's gonna, it's not throwing off the way it should. So if you don't correct that upfront, you're just inviting the same problem after you put down new paving. I'd also like to add that on Twin Leaf, which is also newly paved, brand-new, apparently, and I didn't see them do it, so I can only assume that Sawz replaced a sewer line, water line, or something, there's a cut in the middle. It's in the middle of the block around, I'd say, 140-something. But in paving it, as in what I would refer to as true Sawz fashion, it's now lower than, you know, it sank. It wasn't either properly compacted, or I don't know what the problem was, but maybe it was a temporary thing, and they're gonna come back and finish it. That would be my hope. But it's a depression that, again, depressions only collect water, and then it starts to crack, and this is a brand-new paved street. And again, I just think, I don't know whose job it is that when Sawz does work, who goes by to see, did they do it up? I mean, I remember Richard Green used to come up here and holler all the time about the sloppy work that Bear Med did on Travertine for the same thing with the sewer and water lines. So I would just hope that we're better than that when we're spending millions of dollars, that we follow up to make sure that the work is up to snuff, and if there are any problems, they're remediated before they turn into bigger problems. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brother Dooling. John, can you address that and...
Do you want to do any of this at this point, or you want to talk about it?
No, let's go.
Okay, okay. Brother Dooling, thank you for bringing that up, and we've talked about it several times.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm sorry. We can't respond. We can't respond.
Okay.
I'm sorry, John. Sorry, Brother Dooling. Could you get with John after the meeting and... Good try. The next item is item five, which is consider the appointment of members to the master plan committee. I've been working on this for probably about the past four months, and we have actually a committee that we want to appoint, and we vetted it in a proper way as far as each one of the council members bringing someone forward. And of course, I'm the one that actually appoints these members, but due to everything that's going on in the chain of events in the past few days, we're going to wait until August in order to appoint these members due to the fact that two of the members couldn't be here this evening. It's gonna be a seven-member panel, and I thought that we ought to do it all at one time, and so we're gonna, we're gonna wait until the August meeting. With that said, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda, which is item six. Consider the approval of the June 2016 Treasurers Report. A, consider the approval of June 14th regular city council meeting minutes. Is there anybody that would like to pull any of these items for discussion? Okay. With the consent agenda and no objection, do I have a motion?
So move.
Second? Take your choice. Okay. With that said, all in favor? Thank you, council. Announcements by council. JR?
Last year, some of y'all may remember that we had the bike MS team, the Asphalt Caballeros. We have been riding this year. We're getting ready. The first ride's the beginning of October. We are looking for people to ride, so if you are interested, you can email me or Sergeant Zuniga. The more the merrier. It's a great cause.
Thank you. JR? Matt? John?
Can I come in on the streets?
Sure. This is your time.
Yeah, I just want to say, again, Brother Dooling, thank you for bringing up the information. You know, I was, we walked out and was taking a look at it when we were out there, looking at it with Rick, but real quick comment, though. Please get with Rick, so, because the idea of taking a look at our streets and...
I already have.
Awesome, awesome. But the community can help us police this, and I think it's in a positive way, just to help us continue to keep our streets up, because we are sinking a ton of money into them in the infrastructure. And it's easy, it's pretty easy to, you know, it starts out looking good, but if you start putting cuts in there and you don't follow up with these contractors, because some of them just come and go, and we talk about it a lot to try to keep these guys up to snuff and not let them sneak it in, sneak in some work, and then we get substandard work. And I know Rick is always getting after them, and our inspector's getting after him, too. So it's an ongoing battle, and it'll always be a battle, and it's something that we gotta get up to speed on and get better on. But I want to see these streets get fixed and stay that way, too, and so that's what we're continuing to do. But just thanks again for your interest. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Squire. Councilman Paul, do you have any comments? Douglas?
Yeah, I want to note the passing of my neighbor, Patrick Henry Butler III. He was a very fine gentleman. He was a son of Virginia. He was an only child, an Eagle Scout. He graduated from William &amp; Mary and got his PhD from Johns Hopkins. He was a historian at the Moody House in Galveston. He taught at several universities here in Texas. His home was like a lending library across the street. He had 25,000 volumes in his house, a thousand CDs. I can't even count the number of things that I've been looking for for years that he had on the wall or in his kitchen or something like that. I was looking for a Julia Child cookbook, and he said, "Oh, well, that's right over there." He was better than half-priced books. He had, he loved giving parties, especially around the Miss America time. He loved that. He was a fine gentleman, and I'm sorry to see him pass.
Thank you, Douglas. Okay. We're to the end of the meeting, and I would like to make a few announcements. First, Douglas's neighbor, I want to springboard on that and kind of follow up. He was quite the gentleman. Last year, when we were out during the May election, I didn't know him that well, and I went to his house, and he invited me in. I think after about two hours of, we got through about one section of his books. He even offered to give me one. Fine gentleman, fine gentleman, and it'll be a loss to Castle Hills. The second one is the budget workshops in the back. I hope everyone saw these and would pick one up. Please come this year. The budget is a very important part of our process. We're gonna be thinking out of the box this year and doing some things that we normally don't do. So with that said, stay tuned. The next item is code compliance. This is something that I thought that I would start talking about. There's been a lot of talk about code compliance, what we do, but mostly what we don't do. So I had the code compliance officer actually print up a kind of a summary of what he does. I actually call him the most hated man in Castle Hills, and he laughs at that. But it kind of breaks down the code violations and on a daily basis what he does. We have a new individual. His name is Jose. Fantastic guy. We got him out of San Antonio, and just to let you know, we're following up on these code violations. We're getting serious about them, and if you would like a copy of this, please let me know. I'll be glad to make sure you get one. The last item I would like to talk about is the activities of last night. We have officially, as a city, issued a press release while this is ongoing. I'm not going to read this out tonight, but I'm gonna offer it to anybody who wants it. Just at the end of the meeting, let me know, and we'll run copies off. It'll be titled, "The City of Castle Hills Press Release Regarding the City Manager's Position." Kind of, in a nutshell, it basically says the process, what's going on, and also how you, the resident, can move forward to find out exactly what was in the packet that council received and made their decisions on. Okay? The decision, the packet is being reviewed by the Attorney General of the state of Texas, and once that is released, which we assume will be pretty quick, it will be available at City Hall with a, if you fill out an open records request. Other than that, I would encourage everyone, yes, sir?
Will there be a charge after that?
Yes, there will be.
Do you know how much?
It's gonna be based on the pages. We are not gonna charge labor for it, but we have to charge by law for the page copies. And at this time, it's over 20 pages? It's over 50 pages. So we could, we could charge labor if we wanted to. We decided not to, but we do have to charge for the copies. Okay? And we will have that available to you as soon as possible, as soon as it's approved by the Attorney General. Okay?
Is this such a secret?
There is no secret, sir. This is, if you, when you, I'll be glad to read this, okay? In fact, let's go ahead and do that while the question has been asked. The City Castle Hills Council voted four to one on July 11, 2016, to terminate Diane File as a city manager during a special council meeting. The council passed a resolution declaring it lacked confidence in Mrs. File's abilities to perform the duties of the city manager under the direction and philosophy desired by the council. As explanation by the mayor during this meeting, several complaints were raised against Ms. File, which were up for consideration. However, the preliminary... However, the preliminary consideration for the council was to whether they had confidence in her abilities in the first place. If no confidence exists, regardless of whether any complaints have been filed, the council could remove her by a vote of two-thirds. The mayor explained that no confidence vote is a no-fault determination, meaning it is not based on any finding of wrongdoing. No confidence does not mean incompetent. It means Ms. File may be better fit for a different city. However, as the chief administrative administrator for the city, the city council must have confidence she will execute their instructions the Castle Hills way. This was not an easy decision for anyone up here on the dais. As council members expressed during the meeting, there are several things Ms. File did well. Councilman Gregory noted that, in his opinion, her ability to handle the city's financial situation outweighs the sometimes uncomfortable way she deals with employees. But as other council members expressed, they believe the way she deals with people is of higher priority. In the end, a four to one vote, the council did not believe that the way Mrs. File did things on a day-to-day basis was right for the city. Because the council voted in to separate Mrs. File based on the improper fit, the council did not go into the individual complaints. Had the council believed Ms. File was still a proper fit for the city, the council would have addressed the complaints one by one in public at that time. The complaint's no longer an issue as the city council did not vote based on the complaints. If anyone is interested in viewing the complaints, even though they were no longer an issue, they are welcome to file an open records request. The city council has the obligation to its citizens and to the city employees. While there are many at this city who like Diane File, the city council must make its decision based on the proper balance of numerous factors. The council did not make this decision lightly. We at the city wish Ms. File the best in her future endeavors and the city likewise will be moving on. With best regards, Timothy A. Howell, Mayor of City of Castle Hills. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor? We're done. Thank you.